Commission, today is June 18th, 2024, and it is 6:04, I think. Oh, Ruth has called, and she will be just a few minutes late, but we have a quorum, so we're gonna go ahead and start. We're gonna start by row call, we'll start here on the end.
Beth Gilner.
Erin Borey.
Jonathan Deegan.
Mark Ingram.
Rod Gray.
Sam Dudley.
All right, and then we need, everybody have a copy of the agenda?
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve it? Anybody wanna make a motion to approve the agenda?
I don't think I have one.
Oh. Oh, there it is, what's Sam gave you?
I move to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jonathan, second by Beth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four to zero, motion passes, we'll move on to public comments, there's no public here, so we're good. My comments, I don't think I have anything specific today, so we'll pass up there. One thing we didn't put on here is committee reports, I just wanted to make, I do want to make one comment about that. I did go down today and caught up all of the reconciliations, so we're caught up, and we'll have through now, through today, so that's all done. And our next full meeting is kind of an important meeting, Sam's gonna present the quarterly report, and it has to go to the city, so he'll send that out ahead of time, before the meeting.
Well, I can't send it out until it's approved.
No, I mean send that to us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, everybody kinda review it, and then have, if you have any questions about it, send it to Sam before the meeting, so he can look up, it's hard to know the detail behind something when you're sitting in here, not at your computer. So if you've got any questions on that, and feel free to dig in there and look at it, and then make sure he just knows the questions ahead of time, so he can answer them in the meeting, okay? That's all I got. All right, now we got director's reports, Sam Dudley.
I feel like I should submit these director's reports to the paper, 'cause I make them way more formal, and then when it comes, I don't wanna read it like I wrote it. Anyway, everything was going great, it was a great month, we had the Bigfoot event, everything was going really well, we were fully staffed, the weather was beautiful, and then the storm hit, and kinda flipped everything on its rear end, so to speak. So we spent a couple weeks at least clearing over a hundred trees throughout the parks, so everything's cleared. And the Bark Park, yesterday I was able to use one of our employees' personal excavators and get all the stumps out of the park, so that's good, those are gone. And then today I met with a fencing company representative, came by, we tagged everything, have the Bark Park fixed probably by the end of the week, so, fully open, people are still kinda using it, but, I mean, we'll have it officially reopened, hopefully by the end of the week or early next week. During that time, just wanna give a shout out to Matt and Angie Johnson and Larry Harrison for helping us clean the Bark Park, they came and volunteered, you know, four or five hours of their time to just, you know, remove sticks and clean up, so that was very nice of them. The Trails Committee once again, who paid for some more Eureka Trails t-shirts, that was official, and also the new map box holders on the kiosks throughout town, as well as the ones at Black Bass and Lake Leatherwood, so.
Well, they are kicking butt.
Yeah, we're just taking all their money.
Trails Committee's doing it.
No, they've been great, yeah, they, I mean, it's all part of their visions, so, and they have money to, well, they had money, just, but, yeah, the new maps, boxes look really good, they're all stainless steel, and, you know, you just flip them up, take a map and head out. So now that we've finished up most of the cleanup, we're kinda honing in on Jamboree Ca. We got a volunteer group from Grassy Knob coming, by the way, they will bring about a dozen volunteers, so.
Okay, are we gonna have a meeting?
Yes, they wanna meet, like, maybe the Monday or the Tuesday before the event?
Okay.
That way it's like when the event happens, it's still fresh in our heads, and we're all good to go, so.
I can do that.
Yeah, I'll text you whenever we have a firm date. Let's see, we've got everything pretty much planned out, we got all our food vendors, just FYI, it's gonna be Sauce BBQ, we got Discos, we got Cater Creations, and Red Eye Supply will be the food trucks, and then also Maya's bringing his hot dog cart from Hotbox Pizza, and then we got Gotta Hold, and we got ESBC, Eureka Springs Brewing Company, and then we got Kate Brothers, and we got Sprung Billy playing music, and we got all this cool fun games we rented from Flipping Frogs up in Branson, so, it's gonna be a fun event, Jamboree Ca, July 4th, come on out, I just realized this is the last meeting before then, so, yeah, come out, it'll be fun.
I know, it's hard to imagine.
Even if you live in Eagle Rock, it'll still be fun.
Even if you live in Eagle Rock, it'll be fun.
Yeah, it'll be alright. And then obviously a huge, you know, fireworks display at the end of it, so, free admission, come on by. Just wanted to throw in there before the, you know, since we're having the quarter ways at the next meeting, financially, we're in a good place, we'll get our tax refund, our sales tax collection from the city, probably by the end of this week or next week, so we're sitting pretty well, and I think that's it.
Cool, that is a record, record time. Go, 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 go! Cool, anybody have any questions for Sam over any of that stuff? All right, I actually, committee reports was next, I didn't see that, sorry. We have no old business, so we can go right into new business. And Ruth, it's perfect timing for Ruth, for new business. You're good. First part was boring anyway, it was just Sam.
I know, I saw everyone starting to like drool, everyone starting to fall asleep over there.
Okay, just for the record, Ruth Hager is here now, so, we have an extra, we have five voting members, so, okay, good. All right, Sam, you wanna start on number one on the new business?
Just to go back on the director's report thing, just real quick, just wanna give a big shout out to all the amazing people and businesses who donated for Jamboree Ca, it was really like, kinda like wow, there's a lot of people who gave a lot of stuff, so, we'll give a more pronounced detailed list at the event, but just wanna say thank you, so.
Yeah. Cool. All right, credit card information.
Yeah, so, we just, this is one of those mundane things you just have to do. We need to update the verified users for all our credit cards, currently, Justin Huss, who was the director before, Steven before Scott, was Justin, he's still like the main user, authorized administrator, whatever, for the cards, so we really need to update who can represent the cards, if we lose one, we need to go call in and, you know, verify our ID and all that, and order new ones when need be. So, I talked with Nikki about it, and I think all we need to do as far as making the motion is saying, we would like to, and I made this for whoever wants to read the motion.
Give it to Rod.
'Cause we have a lot of credit cards, I mean, not that many, but.
Can we not just say to all credit cards that?
I feel like it'd be better if we specified the name on each one, I mean, there's only six, but.
Yeah, the key is to specify the names who are authorized, and then as part of the motion also to remove anybody who's not one of those people.
Yeah, so anyone who's not being named in the motion needs to be removed.
So we don't need to list all the people who we don't want, we just need to make sure we list only the people we do.
Yeah.
So leave the two names that are currently on them.
Yeah, so, I guess the motion would be, I'd move to.
Sam and Nikki, right, and remove all the names that are currently on them.
Yeah, and I guess we can just, just for, because it has to go to an email to the credit card company, they have to have the minutes signed.
Just, does everybody clear what the purpose of this is?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure everybody gets that, 'cause that's the reason why we have the second meeting after this meeting, is because they need the minutes from the meeting in order to actually do this.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, after this, Mark will come in and sign it someday this week, and then we can email them that, so.
I move that we remove the names that are on the current cards, and change them to be Sam Dudley and Nikki Boyett as the official users of all the credit cards for Parks Recreation. There are six cards, do I need to read all of them?
For the record, I would.
Okay, ES Parks and Rec Director's Card, ES Parks and Rec's LLCP1 Card, ES Parks and Rec Gardener 1 Card, and the ES Parks and Rec Maintenance 1 Card, ES Parks and Rec Eureka Shuttle Card, and the ES Parks and Rec Office 1 Card. Six cards need to be changed.
Second.
Well, it's back when we had shuttles.
Do we still need that card?
Well, we don't use it for shuttles per se, but I'm letting our trails coordinator use it, 'cause it's nice to have a credit card in case you need to buy something.
It's just what we're tagging.
Yeah, it's just.
There's no official place that it says, okay.
Can I have that for the minutes?
He said for Sam Dudley and Nikki Boyett, do you want to their positions too, or just their users?
It really probably needs to say as administrative, Sam doesn't not need to say that you have administrative rights?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we need to specify, like.
Yeah.
As director and as.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to make, like, me the administrator and Nikki just an authorized speaker on the account, I mean, I don't mind if Nikki does it, but we have to think of positions rather than people, so.
Right.
By default, maybe it's good to have the director be the administrator of the account. And I don't even know what that really means, I guess I would have the power to.
Make changes?
Make changes.
Make changes, cancel a card.
Okay.
And he's just an authorized user.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, so if he pulls in.
You'd have the right to cancel a card, request a new one, make changes to the account, where she would not have that authorization just as an authorized user.
Okay.
So, and I agree that it should probably be the director.
Okay.
Are you adding those words to the motion?
I don't know, I should've wrote them, I should've wrote an official motion, but.
Yeah, I think it's important, so I'm gonna, I don't know how we do it, do we reverse the second?
No, 'cause we're still in discussion, all you have to do is say, go back, right, or just say, go back and, I say, I rescind that, and then say what you want it to be, then we have to second it again, and then we.
Right, okay, so let's, it's what you said, that we wanna make sure that we're listing who the administrator is, because the reason I'm even, I'm even thinking this is because that's what they want in the minutes, to let Sam do what he needs to do.
Yeah, and maybe specify anyone who's not Sam Dudley or Nikki Boyett should be removed.
So, can he have that back?
Trying to figure out how to write this down the way we're doing it.
You can't remember all six?
I can't remember all six cards, I'll try.
Let's try that again.
So the new motion would read that Sam Dudley would be the administrator of the cards, and Nikki Boyett would be authorized user, not allowed to make changes to the cards, and these would be the six cards, ES Parks and Rec's Director's Card, ES Parks and Rec's LLCP1 Card, ES Parks and Rec Gardener 1 Card, ES Parks and Rec Maintenance 1 Card, ES Parks and Rec Eureka Shuttle Card, ES Parks and Rec Office 1 Card.
I second. All right, we have a motion from Rod, and a second from Jonathan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, I'll hold the cards in here. And I'll sign that after we do this next thing, and we'll get it to them and get that done.
Okay.
So, all right, so item number two is the expansion of at-large positions for parks commissions, Sam, you wanna kind of explain what that's about?
Um, yeah, so I just, I talked with Kim one day down at City Hall, and at the time we were still looking for one more commissioner, it turns out, I think we have someone coming in, but I asked her, you know, it would be nice if we could expand the pool, the area, to, you know, maybe add just one more seat, and she said that would be fine, we just have to vote on that, and then it goes to City Council, who would make an amendment to the ordinance, and so really, I mean, if we wanna, right now we have two at-large positions, and I think Rod and Beth are currently the two, and what that means is just the western half of Carroll County as opposed to living in city limits, so, you know, we would just have three out of the seven positions available, could be at-large as opposed to just two, which I think is a better representation of park usership, 'cause that would include people up in Holiday Island, and, you know, people who live south of town or west of town, so, yeah, it's kinda up to you guys, so, I mean.
Did Kim say whether it goes against any state rules or state ordinances or anything?
No, we didn't have any trouble with adding two, she said she would recommend keeping the majority of the seats being in town, which we enjoy, we had four out of seven, but other than that, I mean, no, it's just a matter of getting it to City Council and then.
So basically, it would be four and three. Yeah, I think we're unique in the parks versus, say, as planning commissioner, HDC or something like that, that's very city-specific, where we are not so much city-specific in that we have Leatherwood, we have everything that everybody, a lot of users.
Yeah.
Which, it just makes sense, we could expand it to people in Holiday, somebody in Holiday Island, that would be a perfect scenario for that.
Yeah.
Or again, like.
Out Mundell Road, out around the lake, they all.
None too, yeah, even, even some of that, it's out of the city limits, but still, what we would consider.
And you think about, like, even people who live far enough down Pivot Rock Road.
Yeah.
It's like.
That's true.
They're out of city limits, 'cause they're.
Yeah.
And we're not funded by property tax.
So really what they need from us is an approval that we, we wanna do that, is it in our bylaws?
Yeah, we would just, we would make a motion to say that we, we make a motion to approve the addition of one additional at-large position pending City Council approval.
Or to make one of our not-at-large-at-large, we're not gonna add another position.
Correct, yeah, we're not adding, but like, yeah, making that available to.
So right now we have a vacant position.
Well, I'd also would say.
Well, is it in the bylaws, do we have to change the bylaws?
Well, that's what I remember just mentioning, I don't know, and it might, it might require us to go review that before it goes there, but.
Right now the commission's pretty full, we can take our time on this, I think.
So would Matt?
Yeah, when I did this.
Even though I'm probably leaving, I'm sorry, but.
Hey, Sam, here, a question, there's a couple of things on that, one, we're not for certain that it's not in our bylaws, also that we wouldn't have to change that first, and then have the city change.
I can definitely look into it, I mean, I think.
And we're not in a hurry, we can do that.
No, it's not like.
But the other one I would, would ask, question is, just because it can be an at-large thing, it doesn't have to.
No, 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 it's just, it's just available, 'cause.
That just allows us to do that.
At-large also includes.
City, right.
The city, yeah, so.
So, if somebody in the city said, hey, I want one, we can't say, oh, no, they're only at-large, they're still gonna, can be a person.
Yeah, for sure.
All right. I will take on the finding out if it's in the bylaws.
Okay, then we can vote on it later.
And then we can look at it, yeah, later. And I know that there's another person that's put in an application, and they've already gone through the first part of the city thing, so at the next meeting, they're gonna vote on it, so we'll have a full commission for one minute. Not gonna say anything out loud, but, for one minute. Is everybody okay with that? Let me just.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
By the next meeting, we'll have some.
Let's find out, for sure.
Information, I feel like if it's a bylaw change, we might, we might take that opportunity to review all of our bylaws and just go through them and get them, get that done once and for all, and.
Good idea.
Clean the whole thing up.
Good idea.
So, so I'll take that on and off, I'll get that done. Okay, any other thoughts on that? All right, then we'll go to item number three, Bark Park additions.
This is not a vote or anything, I just wanted to take a minute to air it to the public, that I do have some cool ideas to expand the Bark Park, and so, pending y'all's approval, I would like to move forward with them at some point, not this year, but potentially next year, but having all that damage happen at the Bark Park gonna open our eyes to some of the issues with it. So essentially, if you guys wanna pass this around, I got in the back of my head, I don't need to read that, there's an area down there in the lower parking lot that we could turn, we could lay sod down and turn it into a flatter, more accessible Bark Park for, 'cause there's certain people who have trouble with mobility themselves, or their dogs have trouble with mobility, and our Bark Park's a little rough, so it's not easy terrain, so it'd be nice to have one that's a little easier to access for people. And it also kinda makes some sense out of all the parking down there, if we could put that in there, it'd kinda make more.
More organized?
Yeah, just like, like a coherent thing, instead of just, it's kinda sloppy right now.
Is this in that, down by the, towards the asphalt area?
Yes, yeah, that used to be the old skate park, that's why there's that, like, burned asphalt thing back there.
And they talked at one point about putting basketball hoops down there, letting it be a point of basketball court, which never really did, I don't think, but there was always a hoop there a long time ago.
Oh, really? Okay.
This is a ratty old hoop hanging up there with a net on it or anything like that, but I mean, you know, you see the idea, it was an asphalt piece to bounce a ball.
Yeah.
So, I don't think any ever has been thought about that area other than that before, is it, it was already asphalt, use it for something, but.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm gonna try to pitch it to CAPC to help with funding, 'cause, you know, we do try to promote our town as a dog-friendly town, so we should have a dog park that kind of represents.
I love the idea, I love the idea, having dogs myself, there's no place to throw a ball there, you know, and let them run around. It's not big enough. No, and it's.
It's dangerous.
And it's rocky, and, and like you said, there are people with mobility issues that can't, couldn't get in those parks.
Yeah, and it's hard to maintain because of the, you can't get a mower in there, so.
I love this idea.
What are, what are these little?
Oh, those would be like the parking spaces, sorry, I don't know why it didn't print in color.
That's okay, I'm just trying to picture it.
'Cause you're saving money, it's cheaper.
I know, right, yeah.
And I do see a lot of out-of-state cars down there, so tourists do use the.
And part of the package would also be adding a restroom facility down there, 'cause it's the only facilities up the hill next to the playground.
For dogs or humans?
Don't know that.
Humans, this time.
Oh, yeah, no, the whole place is a dog, the whole place is a dog bathroom, you can go anywhere you want, no, yeah, just a little, you know, it's not gonna be huge, but just, you know, men and women side, and just something where it feels like, oh, yes, you can stop and use the restroom, let your dog out, yeah.
No, she's right, it's a, we're a dog-friendly town, I mean, as.
Some of us even have dogs on our business logos, I mean, shoot.
And restaurants all, that promote dog friendliness like I do, I mean, I've seen such an uptick in dog, tourists and people with dog tours over the last couple, the last few months, really, even worse than usual.
Absolutely, I have dozens probably a day coming into the store.
Me too, way more than I used to.
With their dogs, all from out of town, so I think it's a good thing for us to consider and look at, 'cause it's just gonna make it more enticing and user-friendly and, you know, we already have the messaging there, so, I think we should just try to follow through.
You could put that special turf grassy, they just hose off, that's meant for dogs to poop on.
You can.
Also, my brother-in-law has it in his backyard for his dogs.
Yeah.
So, they did it all in the backyard like that, and they just hose it off, done.
So, is that all you really want? Just kinda get everybody sort of aware.
Yeah, I just wanna let you guys kinda have an idea of what we're thinking, and then also just air it to the public in case anyone actually listens to these things.
Yeah, and next time you guys are just sort of down there, take a look at that space, and now you kinda have an idea, to me, it looks perfect, I mean, I used to live inner-city Dallas, and we had a lot of dog parks close by, within the city, and we had white picket fence, green grass, and you could throw the ball, I mean, long distances, there's a place for them to run, but what you didn't have to do is have them jump over, you know, stumps and stones and rocks on a, on an incline, you know, it's not good for an older dog, even, maybe a little puppy would have fun with that, but.
No.
I do think that would be wise to use that space too for something a little more usable than.
And we would, just to be clear, we would keep the original one, but we would definitely make some modifications to it to make it more, just get more out of it.
It's a really good idea.
Oh, it's been, it's been a nice pilot program, 'cause that was our first dog park.
Absolutely.
So we've, we've seen that people really use it and really need it, so now we can expand and feel like it will definitely be used.
I feel like there's a dog pun just floating in the air.
I know, I know. Floating out there.
All right.
Oh, I'm really chomping at the bit.
Ah, there you go.
Sorry, okay.
Just couldn't resist.
Bless his heart. All right, commissioners' comments, Beth?
None today.
Erin?
None for me.
Jonathan?
Nope.
Ruth?
I guess I won't say anything either, no, I'm good, thank you, I'm good, go ahead, Rod.
I think the city's looking nice and clean, so thank you for all the cleaning up of all the trees and everything, looks good, looks good.
Sam, anything left to offer?
No, just looking forward to Jamboree Ca, so.
So if you need Sam between now and then, it needs to be about Jamboree Ca.
Yeah, I think we're using tomorrow as sort of like the, the holiday tomorrow, as sort of like the, the point where it's like, okay, anything before Juneteenth, and then anything after Juneteenth, it's like, now we're really going for Jamboree Ca, so.
Oh, and Sam and I talked about this today, our, our first meeting in July is July 2nd, which is two days before that, and we talked about trying to meet out at Leatherwood at the ballpark and see if, like, last-minute things anybody needs to know or do, or any.
It's a good idea.
Is everybody okay with that?
It's a great idea.
All right, so we'll, we'll just plan that.
Okay, yeah, remind me to email Kim and tell her that's what we'll be.
So we'll tell Kim about that. Okay, and then the next thing we have here is the minutes from the last meeting, did everybody get a chance to look at that? Any questions, is everybody happy with it?
I move to approve the minutes from the 5:21-24 meeting.
I second it.
Motion from Jonathan, second by Ruth, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, minutes are approved.
That was 21, right?
It was 5:21.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, and then the last.
Oh my God, this is crazy, we're about to start a meeting on time, I put 6:30 on the.
Go, 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 go!
Okay, somebody move to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
Motion by Jonathan, second by Beth, all those in favor?
Aye.
And it's 6:30.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, so that takes care of agenda number one.
Adjourned at 6:30, great.
And then agenda number two is a special meeting for the minutes from today.
Okay, everybody needs to review the minutes.
Yeah, let everybody just kinda take a bit, but we gotta get into order anyway, so. How about it? Okay, so.
I didn't have my regular template, so it's a little different than normal.
Oh, I mean, yeah.
But it's close. And I don't have the signature lines, I'll, I'll put that in right now, right before we vote. The signature lines will be on there. Everybody look.
It's the only one I really.
Yeah. We should all lay eyes on it, at least, you know.
Go ahead, sign this one. So this one's signed, ready to go. I'll come down tomorrow. Is anybody else about had it?
All I'm gonna change.
I've been spraying the lines.
Still guard guard.
Everything. I mean, I got bit all over, and I sprayed like with everything.
I know, I was gonna say.
I touched everything. And I still, and then the fly, I'm spraying fly spray as they're still landing on the frost spray.
I bought some milkies from the kitchen for the fruit flies and for the regular flies. The reason I love the fact, I was outside helping Dave do some stuff, I had already showered, got a midday, done, done with work, went to help him, and I kinda fell into this area where this road bush, I got thorns in me, and all of a sudden I felt something crawling in my hands, looked at, and there's this little black bird, ants just crawling on my arms, and I thought, oh, screw it, I threw my clothes off, jumped in the shower.
Those are the bugs, they never quit.
They were already up my neck when I even got out of the bush.
All right, everybody, we are, welcome everybody to the special meeting of the Eureka Parks and Recreation on June 18th at 6:33 PM, and let's see, here at the, all right, so we're gonna, call it ordered, so we're just gonna do a quick, I guess that is called order, row call real quick again.
Beth Gilner.
Erin Borey.
Erin Bory.
Jonathan Tigan.
Mark Ingram.
Ruth Gubenhager.
Rod Gray.
Sam Dudley.
All right, everyone's here. Can I get a motion for the agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Rod to approve the agenda, second by Beth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes five to zero. Okay, there's no couple of comments. So new business was, as you know, to approve the minutes from tonight's meeting in order for us to get these to the credit card company. So do I have a motion? I mean, anybody want to discuss, I guess?
Move approval for the minutes for the 6/18 regular meeting.
A second.
Okay, motion by Rod, second by Ruth. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I don't think we really need to go through Commissioners' comments again. Did anybody? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion from Jonathan is second by Aaron. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. And today is.
6:34. That was a one-minute meeting.
Yeah, we did good. Wait, let me see. It was a one-minute meeting.
Real, real, real quick, who moved to approve agenda? It was Rod and Beth.
Beth seconded.
Okay, thank you.
And then you and Aaron.
Aaron, we adjourned.
Oh, yeah.
Who, and I could, I didn't have this ready yet. Who did the actual vote on the minutes? That was Rod and Ruth?
Rod and Ruth.
Thank you.
That's funny. You get like in this weird spider web of, we'll have to vote to approve the minutes from the special meeting that was used to just approve minutes.
Right.
For the previous meeting.
That is kind of crazy.
Oh, yeah, that gets so complicated.
Hey, I'm last.